Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library. Can we start with a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Beederman.
Present.
Dr. Mertata.
Present.
Dr. Plasio.
Present.
Dr. Riolo.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a call.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 2025 meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. My name is Ray Beederman, and I have the pleasure of serving as president of our Board of Trustees. It's always exciting to gather with our library community at the Southport Branch, our host for tonight, but it's especially exciting with just a few days remaining in our summer reading program. We'll be hearing directly from the Southport Branch Manager shortly, but before that, I want to take a moment and celebrate something worth noting at the top of this meeting. Our entire library staff has helped lead one of the most successful summer reading programs on record. I'm happy to share that our patrons blew past the community goal of 20 million minutes read. That's great. That's great. Thanks in big part to the dedication of our entire library team, helping and inspiring readers of all ages. You've all continued IndyPL's positive tradition of making reading fun, exciting, and accessible for thousands of people. With the new school year just around the corner, our desire is that the impact of summer reading stays with students, not just in stronger academic skills and new inspiration, but also in a lasting love for books that continues for many years to come. And speaking of that love of books in our public libraries, I'm happy to share that our "We Love Our Library" campaign is connecting with the community. Our patrons are showing their love for the Indianapolis Public Library in wonderful and creative ways, from proudly displaying our colorful yard signs in neighborhoods to sharing personal stories about what the Indianapolis Public Library means to them. I know I have one of those yard signs in my yard, and yeah, people have stopped. People have stopped and asked me where I got them, so you've got two? All right, I need three for the next meeting. All right, very good. All right, very good. But we've also received some patron stories, and here's a recent story submitted on our website. This patron was on a mission to find resources for her mother, who is newly experiencing vision loss. After hitting several barriers with other organizations in town and feeling overwhelmed by online information, she called our Ask a Librarian phone number and was connected with a librarian at the reference desk. This patron described our librarian as smart, eager to help, and effective, and said that in just a few moments, he provided the local connection she needed and turned her experience from frustrating to hopeful. Her words say it best: The Indianapolis Public Library isn't just a building of things. The library is a living team of certified specialists here to help fill the gaps and show us the way when others can't. Isn't that nice to hear? That's beautiful. So this is a perfect reminder that our library staff is changing lives every day. Now I'll ask Ms. Fiona Duke, Branch Manager of Southport Branch, to step forward and share the Southport Branch Board Report. Welcome.
Okay, they've assured me that with four mics, I will be heard, so. President Beederman, members of the library board, welcome to Southport. The Southport Branch first opened in a small storefront in the Madison Square Shopping Center in 1967. It was the library's fourth township location. After outgrowing the space and with the support of local residents and the Perry Township Schools, this location was built, and we opened our doors on April 1st, 1974. In 2016, we underwent an internal renovation that included adding two study rooms, more comfortable seating, and moving the front entrance to the parking lot that was the front entrance before. We are the southernmost branch in the county and the Sunday location serving the South Side. On June 1st, 2024, we celebrated our 50th anniversary in this building with our community. This included a local history presentation, a Burmese cultural dance, face painting, silly safaris, of course, Long's Donuts, we do have the other location, and 50th anniversary themed giveaways. Next slide. We are a regional staff of 24 and 10 volunteers. You can see the general breakdown in positions on the slide. I did some crunching some numbers. Our very dedicated staff has worked for the library for a combined total of 288 years, averaging 14 years and four months a person. We range from our library assistant three, Debbie Faust, who has 52 years of service, down to our newest pages, Ron and me, who have been with us since May. I also want to recognize our volunteers. Five of our programs, Stitch Some Support, Family Game Day, Dungeons and Dragons, Pathway to Literacy, and English Conversation Circles would not be as successful, or in a couple of cases even possible, without volunteers. Additionally, we have two volunteers who provide weekly collection support, and every school semester, we work with a teacher-student pairing from Ron Colley High School's School Life Academy Program. There's our lovely staff up there. Next slide. Okay, here are some of the numbers that help inform the work that we do at Southport. According to Savvy's community profile using data from 2023, Southport's service area has a total population of 45,682. 15.1% identify as Asian, that would mostly be Burmese. 6.9% Black, 7.5% Hispanic, and non-Hispanic white, 65%. Two years ago, when I presented this report, I was using 2020 data and comparing the two data sets, both Asian and non-Hispanic white have trended slightly downward, and while Black and Hispanic have increased. We serve a diverse community, which includes a large number of immigrants and refugees. 17.8% of the people in our service area were born outside of the US. Using the Perry Township Schools to illustrate, over 50% of their students are multilingual from 84 countries and speak 86 different languages. This is a trend that has gone up in the last couple of years. In the branch, staff use tools like Language Line and Google Translate to assist patrons with limited English. We have two staff members who are Burmese. Ba speaks Burmese and Mara. Ni speaks Zope and Hakka. And then we have Shante Gaston, who speaks Spanish, and she is very modest, but her fluency levels make our patrons very happy, so. We are also a site for Pathway to Literacy classes through a library partnership with the Immigrant Welcome Center, and we host English Conversation Circles. Students attend classes recently represented several countries, including Myanmar, Afghanistan, Syria, DRC, Rwanda, and Somalia. Additional statistics I would like to highlight would be that our population of 65 and over sits at 15%, which is higher than a lot of Marion County. And 6.3% of our population has reported having no internet or computer at home. And I included a few photos at the top. That's an English class tour from Central 9. They received library cards. Off to the right, those are some of our English Conversation Circles participants with one of our volunteers. In the middle, that's a Pathway to Literacy graduation party photo. And cute kid with a library card, got that on our 50th. And then down at the bottom, I took that photo recently to illustrate how popular the computers are. Those are mostly kids who walk over here from the apartments. We lovingly call them Roblox Club, so. Next slide, please. Okay, these numbers are from January through June of this year. Our circulation staff has registered 786 new borrowers. Out of the 8,620 active borrowers in June, 20% of those were youth accounts. We have presented 176 programs so far, with 5,663 participants. 56% of those have been for children, for youth. And I'm going to jump down to the summer servings. We partner with Perry Township Schools. This year, the summer servings program ran from June 16th to July 18th, and they served 984 meals to our kids. And not included on this slide, but good to note, we had 162,294 public computer sessions. Since May of 2024, we have hit peak usage of our PCs more during school breaks and after-school hours, and this has been happening more often since we upgraded our PC management system. And up at the top, I want to point out, we have the traveling book bear that PDA sends out during summer reading and visits all the locations, and he's with Delia Novak, who's our mayor's neighborhood advocate. She is holding summer work hours here every Wednesday. And then there's Amber, who's one of our lovely staff out at the reference desk. There's our little library at the bottom that we have at Adult and Child, just south of here on Madison. And of course, the bear likes that we have meals. Next slide. List of our programming, I won't name off everything, but I would like to point out the Chair Aerobics class, which is a partnership with Through the Ages Fitness. This year, with the help of Foundation, we are able to offer 41 weeks of classes on Thursday mornings. Participants consistently note how the class positively affects their physical and their mental well-being. I think the highest number we've had in the room is 63 for a single class. We empty the whole room, it's nothing but chairs and people. Then our Stitch Some Support program. That was started by adult librarian Marie Haddix, who now works at the Warren Branch. Before she left, she found a volunteer-to-service program leader so that we could continue offering it, because unfortunately, the rest of us don't have those skills. And participants use their crochet and knitting skills to create products that are then donated to a variety of organizations like Horizon House. And then Dungeons and Dragons is new this year. We've targeted teens and adults with that program. It's been fairly popular, and we have a volunteer dungeon master. And then you can see Chair Aerobics, there's one of our Paws to Read Dogs Hero. Listening to the traveling book buddy read, Bear snore is on. Down below is another shot of some of our Pathway to Literacy students. And then the other picture, some of our families and kids participating in the village, which is a large-scale fiber art piece. When it's all done, the artist brings sections out to the library. Do you got? So, next slide. Okay, that's another slide of photos. I love photos. We have a kid at the computer showing the book bear how to play Roblox. And in the middle, that's English Conversation Circles group from June. And we've got, there's my daughter with the blue. She's in a robotics class, learning. We did that in the spring, we had a couple of those classes. She's playing with a robot. And then we have two lovely little girls, Sophie and Tina, who are looking at board books. And then Stitch Some Support. Next slide. Some of our community partners include the Afghan-American Community Center, Burmese American Community Institute, Central 9, Chin Center, City of Southport. You can read on the nice list. And that photo's from our 50th anniversary. In that photo with Elisa Vani, who is the CEO and president of BACI, and the book buddy last summer. Next slide. And then we have several photos of our staff out in the community. We love to do outreach whenever we can. The upper, in the upper corner, that's at Crestwood Village South. And then we have several schools. We do partner with West Perry a lot, so that bottom photo is one of our staff members and one of West Perry's librarians at the share event just recently, where we gave out, they received backpacks and school supplies. And that is actually it, so. You have questions?
Any questions?
Just, you had mentioned no internet, no computer usage, 6.3%.
Yes.
How are we addressing that significant of a gap?
So, we do have hotspots that we lend from this location, so that's one way. They, our computers are, I think, in higher usage than they used to be. And we have a lot of space in the library where people can sit and get on our internet and our wifi. That's pretty heavily used here, so.
Do you have any additional recommendations that we might consider?
Not at this moment. I'll have to look into that. I don't know if, if, I know Karen's speaking later. I don't know if she'll have some other ideas.
Probably so, probably so. And the second point, you had mentioned about the seniors and the larger number of seniors attending here.
Yes.
And when I saw the Chair Aerobics, I said, yeah, they're doing it, they're doing it. What other kinds of programs are specifically for the seniors?
So, we have, PDA has been wonderful, a programming department, at providing us with a variety of programs. I know recently, we had a scammers program that a lot of people attended. And we've had several different craft-related programs. Again, so Chair Aerobics has been great, because we announce everything that's coming up, and many of the participants then sign up for the other adult programs. So it's been a great way to connect, so.
Thank you for all the wonderful things and the partnerships and the outreach, it's just awesome.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments?
I just wanted to call out whoever does your boards out there, the decorative. Every library branch has some really cool stuff, but you guys, above and beyond, you've got some artists here. They're really pretty great.
Yes, yes. If you're talking about the bulletin board on the other side, Amber Powell made that one. So she does a great job. Anything else?
Any other question?
Yes.
You show your daughter doing some robotics, so who provided that workshop?
His name is Vinod Agarwal. He's actually out of Greenwood.
I thought so.
Yeah, do you recognize the robot?
Well, he told me he operates around here.
Yes, yes. He gave us, for free, he offered us two one-hour Intro to Robotics classes, and they bring, most of the parts are already assembled, but he has the kids. He talks about the basics, and he has them assemble these sensors, and they watch things move and how it all connects together, so.
Yeah, I think he mentioned this, this branch, actually, so that's why I'm asking. And then the Roblox club or team or group?
Yes.
What's the age range, would you say, more or less?
I would say early elementary through middle school, a few high school, lower high school. But yes, they love playing Roblox. They all bring their friends. I think when we changed our PC system, word got out that Roblox was now possible on our PCs. And so we've used the opportunity to get to know a lot of the kids. We know many names, and that's not a bad thing. So, yeah, we've enjoyed that, building those relationships, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Anything else?
I actually have, if there aren't any more questions, I make sure first there aren't anymore. There's one more slide. And then I'm going to ask my staff member, my coworker. He's one of our children's librarians, Andrew Davis, to read.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Fiona. I would just like to read about our friend and coworker Alex. Earlier this month, Alex Kleikenberg, Beard, on July 2nd, she lost her battle with cancer. Alex started her journey with the library in 2014. She was a substitute library assistant based out of Glendale, and she was currently, at that time, also working for the Indianapolis Zoo. In June of 2021, Alex joined our team here at Southport as our newest children's librarian, and she had a team focus on her work. She also served on the summer reading in LGBTQ+ Services Committee, presented teen art programs, she managed our Paws to Read with the reading dogs, assisted with baby and toddler storytimes, as well as helped design some of the displays and decor around the branch. Those were mentioned, so some of those things are still Bear Alex's handiwork. Alex was very funny, intelligent, and kind, and very creative. She loved working for the library, and she loved this community. This was Alex's dream job. We were fortunate enough to be able to consider ourselves her friends and coworkers, and she will be sorely missed.
Thank you. All right, may Miss Karen Moore, Supervisor of Digital Inclusion, please come forward and share a report on the digital inclusion initiatives. Welcome.
You all should have a packet of what I'll share today. Thank you. First, thank you to the board. Thank you for the invitation to share a little bit about the tech learning team. Thank you to Southport. Always, I always make the claim that they showed me great Southern hospitality, so. So, I always achieve that very well. So again, my name is Karen Moore. I've been with the library now over 10 years, and Central was my starting home, still is, because we're in PDA. However, I get the privilege to go to all the branches and spread outreach, so gonna share a little bit about the tech learning team. Next slide, please. So a little bit about our team. Like I mentioned, we're out of the program and development area out of Central, but I'm privileged enough to be able to travel to all the branches. My team that I supervise is myself, six tech learning specialists, and one admin assistant. Together, we develop and present a variety of programs and initiatives to offer across the system and in the community. Next slide. When we talk about the needs in the community and digital inclusion, I want to acknowledge that there are many barriers, especially for the adults that I serve in our community. This isn't just about owning a device, it isn't just about the access, but the resources, the training. And of course, once you learn that, technology changes. Access, we know, is the most visible barrier. Public access points like the library and our branches often become the only digital connector. But what happens when the library closes or the hours don't align with their schedule? Then, of course, is the issue of resources. Even when low-cost options exist, affordability is still out of reach for some families. This is what really drew me to this work, letting people know that we offer high-quality computer classes. I stand firmly behind the quality of what we provide, because it's not just a class. It's a real chance to grow foundational skills for something that is now a necessity in life. But it doesn't mean it just stops when you learn it, because as I mentioned, technology doesn't sit still. Devices update, interfaces change, new platforms emerge. For someone who's just learning to log into an email or check an account, this is a constant evolution that can feel very overwhelming. It's not just about catching up, but it's about staying caught up. Next slide. Our programs support our strategic goals by helping people build those skills that they need. We focus on digital resiliency, making sure adults feel confident about using the technology. With socioeconomic well-being, we use tools like North Star Digital Literacy as a platform to provide support for job seekers who can report to their employers that they have skills that they're measuring and to support the positions that they're looking for. Our STEAM-based programs help explore and create and provide opportunity where people can create for fun or even help build entrepreneurship. Next slide. So part of that is what we build out in our curriculum. Our curriculum, as you can see, is very robust. It has a little something for everyone, from the beginners to building with series like Microsoft Office, Google Suite, how to use a smartphone, the internet itself. We offer specialized tailored programs for our seniors. Also, we have open lab concepts for learning, for job seekers using North Star, as I mentioned. Digital creativity is probably a passion project from my heart, because I love a cricket machine. So a cricket is a cutting machine that can make logos. I recently actually just had a couple come to a class at Glendale, and they came down to Central to make shirts to sell at the brickyard this weekend, and they were very happy, so. It's always good to see how that can kind of play back into the community and build something for themselves, because it makes them self-sustainable. Next slide. And we're able to do this because we have what's known as the pop-up lab. So in the picture you'll see, we have a set of So in the picture you'll see, uh, we have a set of computers and laptops, uh, mice setup. It consists of twenty laptops. They also bring accessibility tools, so high-vis keyboards, adaptable mice. Things to make the patron feel comfortable and participants as they come to our classes. I mentioned outreach and the community, and some places, they have a space, they have tables, they have chairs, but nothing else. So we even have a pop-up projector and screen that we teach anywhere. Talk about mobile learning, right? Um, and then access to creative tech tools. So while we have some digital creativity programs that originated at Central only because we had one. Now we have the opportunity to bring three or four different machines, so that we can meet patrons in our branches, they can make appointments. And we can expand on the offerings that we have. So it's all through bringing that digital classroom to any space that's available. Next slide. So it all comes down to the impact, of course. Um, our team has evolved and changed over the years. Only up until last year, uh, we had closed the door of the computer lab at Central. And reimagine the space for programs. Because we at Central, we have computer support on four, five and six. This gave us, the, the team itself, the opportunity to go out in the community and expand, especially for branches that don't have computer lab assistants. Or computer support. Um, so us having, building the curriculum, uh, with our classes also. Our classes are typically two hours long, so it really engages our patrons. Um, when we have our series classes, it's the same time every week for three to four weeks, depending on the course. And we're able to make that impact. So we've had over sixteen hundred attendees. And this data is from June twenty-four to June twenty-five. Um, so I believe from twenty twenty-three's perspective, that was about a fifteen to twenty percent increase. Um, with us beginning just to roll out, to go out in the community and with staffing changes. And then North Star, as I mentioned, um, throughout the branches, because of course, we return to different branches and bounce around. Uh, we leave the staff with curriculum that they can have access to the resources. But patrons can log in, it's a self-demand online support system, so they're able to interact. But we notice that they always come back to class because they like to share the wins, they like to share what they learned. Um, and also to get that interaction and that one-on-one support in a classroom setting. So with North Star, we've had, um, nearly five hundred users. And it's unique users because we know we track them individually. It's not one day signing on. And then they've spent over twelve hundred hours of learning, so on assessments, on resources, on tutorials, um, in that nature. So we expect to continue to see this to grow as we increase, um, and seeing that patrons get that most impact from returning back to class. Here are some examples of some photos. Uh, we have our digital creativity class, um, up at the top. And then below is actually at a senior primary care center we do outreach with, with our senior tech academy, um, at Centerwell, Senior Primary Care. So again, we just, we bring everything and pop it up there and make it work. Next slide. Okay. So our hotspot lending, so my team manages that program, for everything from troubleshooting, uh, to. Patron interactions, things like that, that we have to do. Uh, branch support, of course, because if they need something, we want to provide it. With our hotspot lending program, it's another way we try to remove that connection barrier. So it was one of those things where, where the funding is going and how we're gonna expand on what we can offer our patrons. With affordable connectivity program coming to an end. So we have roughly around a hundred and seventy-four devices that are currently in circulation. Through the year, we've had over sixteen hundred checkouts, and it's available in sixteen different branches. And those branches were identified as the highest digitally divided areas that patron can get to. So it's more than just access to the wifi, but it's to make sure that they have the tools they need to live and connect and learn. Um, so though it's a high-demand program, we try to keep up with it. One quote that I'll share with you on the screen is from a patron who lives in a senior facility. And she kind of missed her moment to connect, to get groceries. And if it wasn't for that hotspot connection, she told me she would not be able to get groceries. So, um, though we have very little hotspots, when the need is there, it is met. And it, it really stuck out to me. Next slide. So I love to share, I didn't have as many photos, but I love a good quote. And um, these come from a ra- variety of different classes that we have, from our Senior Tech Academy to Cricket, to Microsoft Excel. Which is one of our most highly-attended class series. Um, and then my word cloud of inspiration that I keep up. Um, so at each class, we present patrons with the opportunity to take a survey, cause it's how we keep our programs going. And over ninety percent of them have said they agree or strongly agree that they can use this knowledge that they gained after taking a computer class. And then the word cloud is just simple words that are taken from those collective surveys. It gives me more inspiration, um, to ensure that we're doing the right thing and also seeing the trends that are happening. Next slide. And then as we start to partner more, um, on the right-hand side, you'll see that we have a few partners from Goodwill of Central Indiana. Centerwell, as I mentioned, uh, Community Alliance of the Far East Side, and the towers at Crooked Creek. Uh, so we've expanded also to do classes in different languages. And working with our program specialist, Sakura, and working with interpreters and presenters. And providing that pop-up lab support that we can provide across more and multiple branches. And then staying innovative, of course, keeping up with the technology ourselves, because we have to learn it in order to teach it. Uh, providing those digital access resources and then continuing to connect and collaborate. Uh, being that I'm always out in the community, I feel like a celebrity sometimes, cause people say, that's my teacher. So, um, you know, it, it gives me power when I'm seeing people out and about, when I'm downtown and walking around and, you know, seeing the impact firsthand. Um, and being that kind of boots on the ground from over the last ten years. Next slide. That's all I have. I was, I was trying to keep it out of time, but um, you know, I really feel passionate about the work that we do as the tech learning team. Um, I appreciate the opportunities and extending our reach through those partnerships. We look forward to continue to connect with our community, connect with our patrons and staff and colleagues as well. Any questions?
Great, um, I'll, I'll start with a question for you.
Yes.
Um, so what um, sort of changes do you envision happening, um, with teaching about AI and um, prompt generation?
Yeah, actually, um, I'm glad you asked that. It's a great question, because it's the talk of the town. Um, we're actually developing and finalizing an AI course for, to launch the first uh, quarter of next year. Uh, we're coming at it with a intentional, how it's being used, why it's being used, um, and the different forms. You know, AI is not necessarily new, um, but again, it is the talk. But part of that kind of stems off of our scams class, where we're teaching people how to recognize those deep fakes. Uh, phishing scams, things like that, to be prepared. But also, it can be a benefit as well. So you know, we gotta play both sides there, because it can be used just like Google Maps. Or if you say, hey Siri, you know, those, that's all AI as well. So we're trying to be intentional about how we bring that forward to the public. So we're excited to launch that in the first quarter of next year.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Please?
It's been a, hi, thank you so much for this. You've got some great stuff happening. It's been a while since we've heard about the hotspots. And I think it was when we were in East Washington, that we were told they come back broken. Or they don't come back, and there was a huge need and not enough devices. Is there still that imbalance? Is there a grant or any way that we can fulfill more of that need? I think that's really important.
Yeah, um, I was, now it actually was really important to me why we decided to keep going with the hotspot. Because the Chromebooks that we used to lend, um, were just not sustainable with the cost and the damage and loss rate of them. Um, so with the hotspots, because the Affordable Connectivity Program had ended, we decided to continue with that and apply for funding. Um, so that is still out as most federal funding, we know. Um, but we do have a plan to continue. We're just trying to see how that outplays, um, with ordering more. But I'm hopeful and feel very optimistic the hotspots will continue. Yeah.
Great. Other questions?
So you said that the funding, the federal funding is ending, stopping, stop?
So the grant that we applied for, we just haven't gotten a yes or no. So it's kind of in limbo, but we did have an alternative plan to see about continuously funding it another way. So we're just waiting to see how it all kind of falls out.
Okay, and then following up with, uh, is there a man? On the side of VR, augmented reality, all that kind of stuff, is there any plan on diving into that sector as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that is part of it. Um, our colleague, uh, my team member Dan, specifically, and Jana Crider. They are working heartlessly to make sure that we're hitting all avenues. And that was one thing why we didn't want to rush to kind of throw it out, just because it's new. We really wanted to be right and solid in information that we're sharing, to make sure that we're getting multiple sides of it. So when we're preparing curriculum, we do take that second, uh, to just kind of reflect and see really, what are people asking? What do they need? What are we seeing in the technologies as well?
Okay, um, any? A, a lot to better understand the, the surge or the, the, what are the top skills and demand, not only from the users, but also from employers?
For that, I would say more so, um. For the user side, it's going to just be the access and implementing, you know, what they see in the outcome of. You know, what they're using it for. It's really about the direction of that.
Talk about skills, like employability skills and that, that kind of stuff. Is that what North?
Yes, so for the employer skills, um, they're putting, so it ranges from computer basics, um, to internet. To how to job search, how to apply that search skills in the platform, um, to get a better user experience, to get a better response. So that they're using the right keywords. Uh, with North Star, they're also able to log those hours. And if they take a proctored assessment, they can earn certificates. So that's a way that they can add to their resume to say, I've proven that I've done the skill work. And I've passed it, not only just passed it, but I passed it above average, because they do require eighty-five percent pass rate. Um, which I like to empower people when they're taking assessments, because you know, if you're thinking about school, it's like sixty-five, seventy. It's like, no, you're eighty-five. That's so much closer to a hundred. Um, so you should feel really good about that. So they're able to kind of walk away with a certificate, they take that proctored exam and pass. And then it's another way we can pad that onto the resume, to say, you've demonstrated these skills, you've earned this, and you deserve to be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, uh, so before we get started, uh, we welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries. Uh, and this is a time when, uh, the public may address the library board. If there are several individuals representing the same group, please select a spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comments, uh, someone else has offered. Um, please note that this public comment time is not an appropriate forum for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints. And alleged employee misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department. Where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Uh, each speaker should give their name, if they're, um, speaking on behalf of a group. All right, uh, let's proceed.
Okay, uh, first person up, uh, we had, do you have four speakers this evening? First person is Corbett, Corbett Navanna. And then after that, we'll have Jackie Harrell.
All right, welcome.
Hello, uh, my name is Corbin Havener. I am, I am here as a teacher at IPS School Fifty-One. Martinville-Brightwood Neighborhood, uh, Home Branch Glendale. And, um, you know, one of the things that, you know, I was very appreciative of, um, going, uh, going into IPS. Is the library shared system and the partnership with Indianapolis Public Schools, along with other, um, public school districts. Across Marion County. Um, as we, as many of us have been aware, um, you know, it has like. IPS as a district was hit with a, hit with basically everything, um, we could handle from the state legislature. Um, the past legislative session. And, you know, many of that had to do with, um, decisions that have been made. Um, decisions that have been made both by the state, county, city, IPS itself to stand forward. But, um, even with, um, Innovation Network Partners, um, they were able to come up with a statistic. That, um, related to an artificially low number of enrollment within the IPS zones. And basically, as members of IEA and of course, the, um, IPS Parent Council. It just felt like, um, you know, we were fighting, like we were fighting for our lives in the school district. And, um, you know, it has come to my attention that, you know, the library is always a great place to promote things. But, um, you know, um, Marion County has always been a fertile ground for charter school expansion. Which has largely, um, you know, which has largely, um, created artificial competition. For the same students within Marion County, considering I work for a district that, um, supports the public good of all students. That, um, live within, live within our zones. Um, I believe there is a policy that we need to look at, um, on whether or not it is appropriate. For, um, representatives of non-traditional public schools. To be, um, recruiting, uh, to be recruiting students at any of our library branches. As the consequences of the prolifer- proliferation of charter schools in Marion County. Particularly IPS zones has seemed to come to a head, and we've got to have a clear and unified path forward. Thank you.
Well, and then after Jackie, we'll have Carla Schmidt.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm, uh, obviously not dressed for the occasion, but. I'm the crazy cat lady, I guess, around here, but, uh, um. My name is Jackie Harrell, is pronounced. That's okay, everybody mispronounces it. I was born and raised in Seymour, Indiana, and I came up here and went to college at Indiana Central. Now U-Indy, and I've been in Indianapolis ever since, on the south side. I've been told that back, uh, seven years ago, when the manager of this branch was an open position. That I was instrumental in, uh, bringing, uh, Fiona Duke as the, um, manager here. And she's been here now seven years. And, uh, so if you're, if you like Fiona and you're happy, I get the credit. If you don't like her, I get the blame. So, depending on your point of view, but we all like her. We think she's great. I'm here also to speak about the senior, uh, classes that are presented here. We mentioned the one about scamming and everything, that's excellent. Any other things that, uh, seniors need to know about is, is just, I can't think of all the titles off the top of my head, but. They've all been wonderful, and especially the chair aerobics. Um, my husband and I both attend. I didn't realize that the highest number in the class was sixty-two. I don't know how to get sixty-two chairs in here, because, uh, a lot of times with aerobics, we're doing this. And you hit your neighbor and, and all that, but everybody laughs about it and has a lot of fun. So, uh, our instructor, uh, through, uh, through the ages fitness is wonderful. She's energetic. She's, uh, very talented in what she does, and, uh, we all just really enjoy it. So, uh, I understand the Library Foundation is the group that votes yea or nay. Uh, as to whether the, through the ages fitness come, comes here, continues coming here and, um, having those classes. And I, I. And I I sincerely hope that that classes are continued. Right now, they go through the Thursday before Thanksgiving, the week before Thanksgiving. Um, and then remains to be seen whether they'll have the classes in January, but I do hope they will. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Who's uh next?
Carla Schmidt, and then we'll have Mary Ann Ruhle.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Carla Schmidt. I'm a special education teacher in Washington Township. And my daughter has her freshman curriculum night tonight. And it's really crazy to see Dr. White here, cause you're like the man, the myth, legend. I've never seen you in person, so it's nice to see you, sir. Panthers are going strong. Um, I I also wanna thank you all for all the work that you do. Um, our family is a huge supporter of the library. Uh, my son is on the autism spectrum, and the library was one of the first safe places at no cost that I could bring him to the children's story hours. So you guys have a um, a big place in our hearts and we can, and we love our branch, our Michigan Road um branch. Um, I apologize for my appearance. I spent all day in my classroom. Um, and I came, we drove the hour here because I couldn't come not speak to you about an issue that has been referenced a few moments ago, but I'll I'll say different things. Um, my kids and I, when we visited the neighborhood Michigan Road Branch over the summer, um as we do for the summer reading program. So exciting to hear all the stats about that, by the way. Great job. Um, I was really shocked and disappointed to see that a charter school was actively recruiting within the building. Um, I spoke with the branch manager uh about very, I mean respectfully, I love librarians, like I've never like go yell at a librarian. But I was like, how is this possible? And um, she said anybody that has a community connection at all would be allowed space, and I'll get back to that in just a minute. Um, this particular charter school um is a private school model, is a single gender school, um has a board that is not elected or nominated by elected officials. Um, they, the board members do not live in our neighborhood. And even though we had a community mid-meeting last January filled with a hundred neighbors legislators and the civic league to meet with the school organizers and told them unilaterally that we did not want them in our neighborhood, they were approved and we will now share property tax dollars with them. Um, I don't expect you to have a magic wand to solve school choice in Indiana. However, what we can talk about is the policy of who we let into our truly public libraries, who have the doors open to all, everyone, all genders, all backgrounds, all income levels, uh just as our traditional public school models do. Um, so I was had a couple of things I was brainstorming, you know, how can we make this fair? Like, how can we protect our public goods as they are under attack in this country? Our our public schools, our public libraries are under attack in this country. Um, maybe we have a checklist or an application or something for these organizations trying to get into our, into our le- into our schools. And we all know that when if someone sees a table at the front of the library, they think the library is endorsing that table, even if they're just providing the space. So maybe it's signage that when uh when organizations come in, maybe it's a sign that says organization is not endorsed by the POG Library, we are providing space, some sort of legalese that someone smarter than me can figure out. But to make it very clear that we are not endorsing this. Um, does it, does it, does this organization harm or help the public good? Consider having a community reference, or maybe ten signatures from folks who live in the zip code to vouch for the organization. Um, and who is the orgi- organization accountable to? So those were just some ideas that I had um off the cuff about looking at this policy. Um, as my friend Corbin said, I mean IPS, the the continued defunding of IPS and our public schools, we're gonna see more of this. So I really wanted to come speak to you because I think we should, and and no matter how people feel about charter schools, not charter schools, we, I think it would be really good to kinda lock down on a policy and make it clearer to defend who we're letting in and who we say, sorry, this is not the space for you. You're not, you're not a truly public entity. So um, those were just my thoughts, and if anybody wants to brainstorm afterwards, um, I'm available for one hour before I go back to my uh lesson planning for when the kids come tomorrow evening. So um, thank you for your time. I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Which one? So many choices. Am I speaking? So you can hear me? Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Schlegel Ruger, and I am a north side Indianapolis resident. I'm extremely fortunate to live within easy distance of not one, but four of your branch libraries. Um, I loved attending the grand openings of the new Glendale Library and the beautiful renovation of the Nora Library. There are truly wonderful celebrations of our community. We are so lucky to have our libraries as places for all, places where we read, learn, and get along with each other. I'm coming to this evening to also inquire about the library's policy for the appropriate role of our many K-12 schools in the library. I see from the presentations that of course, schools are partners to the library and and they play an important role. And people from the schools do come into the library to help with classes, to do various things. Recruiting in the library, as others have talked about, I think crosses a line that becomes a different thing at that point. Um, as a resident of IPS, I've seen enrollment flyers on the bulletin board in the College Avenue Library for several years. Um, but I was still surprised a few weeks ago when the charter school placed the table in a prominent location inside the entrance at the Michigan Road Library. And they manned it for several hours with two employees to recruit new students from among the children visiting the library. I don't know if recruiting of that in-person, direct, please sign up now type happens at the other libraries. Maybe it's been going on for years, and because I'm on the north side, I just don't know about it. I also don't know if recruiting happens for other organizations that recruit children or adults. But I think the important thing to think about as you think about a policy, or as you review the policy that you have, is to remember that when it comes to K-12 schools, each child can only attend one school. And what that means is that allowing one school, in this case, a charter school, to recruit in person at the library means that every other school loses that child, including possibly the school the child was already attending. So I think you can make a distinction here, which means this isn't like recruiting children for Girl Scouts or other organizations, because if a parent is willing to drive the wheels off their car, the same child can be a Girl Scout, they can be a 4-Her, they can be a Campfire Girl, and any other organization like that that exists. There's no ban if you're one in being the other. But our state says that the child can only be in one. And the same thing is true of adults. I was a toastmaster at one time. Uh, if I want to exhaust myself, and if the toastmasters possibly come to the library to sign up, I don't know that they do. I can be a toastmaster again, but I can also be a lion, I can be a rotarian. I can be an endless number of things. So maybe you could kinda think about that as a distinction as you look at, how do we treat community organizations? And and as a last, you know, last thought, I'm assuming you don't want my Presbyterian church to set up a table inside and ask people to sign up to be members. That would be kind of the ultimate version, and I don't think we wanna go there either. Um, I'm happy to talk about any of these in any points, but especially just thank you so much for the libraries. They're wonderful.
That is our last speaker.
Thank you very much. All right, let's uh move on to approval of minutes uh from executive sessions, regular sessions and special meetings. Uh, we had a regular meeting on June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, the regular meeting held June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five? All right, there's a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? We will now have a roll call to approve the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Uh, Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo. Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approve. All right, the motion's carried. Very good. Let's move on to the finance committee. Uh, Dr. White, you are Chair of the Finance Committee.
And uh, being a son of mine, I always have some great people to help me with finance. So Alita, Mary, come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. So um, our presentation's gonna be kinda long, so be patient with us today. Um. Uh, today we will review the treasury report for the year ending, a month ending June two- twenty-twenty-five. And Mary will um do this report, present the report.
So uh, in June, we have received uh now fifty-two percent of our property taxes for the year. The rest coming in November and December. Uh, it's aligned with when, you know, the payments are made to the county. And it's, we did receive two percent over the expected budget for that, that fifty-two percent. Uh, intergovernmental, which is the coat, lowet, and license excise tax also came in. So that's as well over budget. Uh, charges for services was largely public printing and catering revenue. Um, making up that amount. And uh, the miscellaneous is primarily interest revenue uh with the total interest earned this month of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. With the Huger Fund and Trust Indiana earning over four percent each. Next slide. This show, this next slide shows the revenue for the month compared to the budget for the month and as well as last year's. So um, the property taxes receipts are up for the month as well as uh intergovernmental fines and fees, charges for services. And miscellaneous is down some um primarily because of uh interest uh going down a little bit. On year-to-date, that's also presented by type uh compared to last year at this point and the year-to-date budget expected. So property taxes are up, uh intergovernmental is um over expected and as well as uh the fines and fees and charges for services is a little bit under budget. But and miscellaneous is over budget. Any questions on revenues? No? On the expenditures then, uh the largest expenditure type is for personal services and benefits, which is sixty-six percent of the total expenses uh incurred. Uh, supplies are three percent, and these are all running under budget. And um, other services and charges which is uh primarily various types, legal, security, cleaning services, equipment supplies, and technology are in that category. And capital outlay, which is five percent of total expenditures, is for the books and materials. And then we have the graphs as well on the next slide for the month and the year-to-date. Showing the budget in gray on the monthly uh with bar charts by type with um June coming in at two-point-seven million versus the budget at three-point-three million. So all this, the expenditures are under budget through careful cost management. And it's creates a healthy surplus for us. And then uh, the year-to-date is shown in the line chart on the right with the two thousand twenty-five being in blue, yellow is the budget. So it it does demonstrate we're under budget and um we're over slightly over last year, which was expected as planned with the budget for salary increases. And that, that's all for the treasurer's report. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions on the treasurer's report? All right, is there a motion to accept the report of the treasurer for June twenty-twenty-five for filing for audit? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Ten thirds, perfect. Any further discussion? You're hearing none. We'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Uh, approved. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, um, next. I'm very good. All right, so I will adjourn the regular, I will suspend recess. Thank you. Man, that's a wrong word in the script. What's going on here, dude? All right, recessed the regular meeting and convene a public hearing. Um, this will be a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six multifan- multi-facility long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project bonds. Uh, Ms. Campbell, can you discuss the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six multifamily long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project bonds?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to invite um Mr. Jason Tansel and Mr. Jeff Crocker Bush here. Uh, they are our legal and bu- um bond counsel for our working group.
Excellent, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Hill, pleasure to be with you this evening. This is actually my home branch when I was growing up and going to school here in Prairie Township. So it's nice not to just be with you all this evening as well, but to also be back in my home library branch. So it's it's nice to be here. So tonight is the second of two public hearings that we've had on this project and the financing. The first one uh was at your June twenty-third meeting at the Pike Branch. This will be the second one. At the conclusion of the public hearing and presentations, you will then consider two resolutions, one of which will be called the preliminary determination resolution that's in your board packet that will be approving the, on a preliminary basis, the project and financing based on the parameters presented in the presentations this evening by Mr. Tansel and also Mr. Parsons. The second one is the approval of the additional appropriation of the bond proceeds and interest earnings. Just like in your normal budget, when you approve your budget, you have an appropriation as well as a revenue for those uh budget purposes. This is outside of that because it's not part of your regular budget as on a normal basis. So uh, just by way of background, let me remind you that this is for the twenty-twenty-four facility assessment study that was done to start to tackle some of those projects that are listed in that facility study. Uh, this will be uh part of a long-range plan that will probably be coming back multiple years with multiple bond issues to address facility needs as facilities age and as they need to be updated and addressed as you implement new programs and those sorts of things. The parameters that are approved by you in the resolutions this evening, if you do approve those, are maximum parameters. So they're uh making assumptions regarding uh interest rates and regarding assessed value that are very conservative so that we have those artificially high, so that we don't have to come back and repeat the process again. If you do approve those resolutions this evening, then we will publish a notice that preliminary determination in the two local newspapers. We would then have that run for thirty days. At the end of that thirty-day period, we would then also then go to the City County Council if we're not asked to go through any additional approval processes by the community. There will be another set of public hearings at the City County Council on these financings and these projects. And then if they approve them, then we will come back to you all in October and for a final approval of the bond resolution and proceed with the projects and the financing in October, November, and December. So that's the process in that we have here in a nutshell. The notice has been published in accordance with the Indiana Papers and Indiana laws. It was at least ten days in advance of the June twenty-third meeting. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the overall overview of the project, the process. And if you don't have any, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Tansel to talk about the projects and the financing.
Any kind of public comments thus far?
Not to my knowledge, no. I don't believe we received anything. Nor did we receive any adverse comment at the first public hearing either.
Okay.
All right, that I'll, I'll advocate my seat and let Mr. Parkin Parsons come up here to talk about the project as well.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Good job.
Thank you.
I had to brave ninety-two degree weather. The primary project for this bond is the uh West Indy renovation. The primary project for this bond is the, uh, West Indy renovation, West Indianapolis branch, um, renovation. So, uh, we're currently evaluating architects for the planning, programming and design of that renovation. Um, and it is possible that, um, uh, sorry, let me back up a second. Um, part of the planning and programming and design of the branch is to assess the need of the branch. Uh, renovation, expansion, you know, what does that community need from a facility at that location? Uh, and that's why, um, you know, the, the cost may, um, may change, the estimated cost may change along the, um, process. Uh, so it is kind of, uh, it's unknown right at the moment. Uh, but again, that's why, uh, that's the primary, uh, project. There are other, um, capital asset projects that can be addressed with, uh, the additional, um, the additional funds from this, uh, bond. And those are identified in our facility condition assessment that we received a few years ago. Uh, and just prioritizing those would, uh, make up the rest of the funding.
Questions on that part? All right. Yeah, keep going.
Good evening, members of the board, thank you for having me. My name is Jason Tansel and I'm a director with Baker Tilly. And we represent the library as your municipal advisor. Now that we've had an opportunity to hear about the project's scope and need, we will now review how the library could pay for this project through a property tax-supported bond issuance in an amount not to exceed fifteen million dollars. It's important to keep in mind tonight, as Mr. Quackenbush mentioned, that we are establishing maximums. And these are maximums we cannot exceed, but we can come down from. They would include items such as the borrowing amount, the repayment term, interest rate and maximum total debt service. So we do have a presentation here and this is slide two. So if I could draw your attention to this, you will see that on this graph, there are currently ten bonds outstanding of the library. And that in twenty twenty-five, total annual payments were approximately twenty-one million dollars. In twenty twenty-six, that drops to approximately sixteen million and so on and so forth, with every single year declining in annual payments until all bonds come to maturity in twenty thirty. This is important because, uh, as these debt, debt service payments retire, the library would have the ability to replace these payments without exceeding these annual payment levels. And could accomplish this, but why staying within is three point one eight cent debt service tax rate. And so right now we are not estimating an increase to the library's debt service tax rate through the issuance of this bond. Next slide, please. Uh, third slide, one too far. Can we, can we go back to slide three? Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay, appreciate that. I can skip the third slide. Okay, thank you. The bonds being discussed tonight are general obligation bonds. There is a limitation as to how much an entity can issue. And this limitation is two percent of one-third of the most recent net assessed value. You will see with Indy Public Library's net assessed value of almost sixty billion and also taking into account the other ten general obligation bonds outstanding, that currently there is three hundred and fifty-five, five hundred and ninety-six million available. So the fifteen million that we are discussing here tonight fits well within this constraint. Okay, next slide. Thanks, Alita. This is a summary table of the, uh, information that you would see within your resolutions tonight. Again, we are establishing maximums, so I do want to review these with you. Maximum borrowing amount not to exceed fifteen million dollars. Uh, we are estimating approximately fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand would be available for the project after bond cost of issuance. A maximum repayment term of six years, but right now we are currently estimating the repayment term to be three years. Maximum annual debt service and nine million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And maximum total debt service, this would be our principal plus interest expense, would be eighteen million, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. So using a maximum interest expense of three million, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, that's based upon that six percent interest rate. But, uh, currently that six percent interest rate is well above where the bond market is today. Uh, the bond market is closer to four percent. So we would estimate our interest cost to be lower than this three million, twenty-seven thousand dollar figure. Currently, the library's debt service tax rate is three point one eight cents. We would not anticipate an increase above this. And we are also not anticipating an increase to the debt service levy. You'll see that in twenty twenty-five, the library's debt service levy was nineteen million, twenty thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. And we are not anticipating an increase over this, uh, as assessed values. Uh, we are trying to be conservative, assuming they remain flat. Also within your resolutions required to be provided are total debt service as a percent of net assessed value, which is point zero four percent. And then total direct and overlapping entity debt, that is ten point five four percent. On our next slide, you'll see the pro- Absolutely, yeah.
Um, can you explain what that note is about Senate Enrolled Act One?
Absolutely, uh, that's our, that is a note about Senate Enrolled Act One and how, uh, frankly, that it's just, it's new and that it was just passed into law this April. And that, uh, as these, if you think about the deductions that potentially would be in, involved in Senate Enrolled Act One, that could have an impact on net assessed values. Uh, but we don't know yet what gross assessed values would be, excuse me, in twenty twenty-six, in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. And so because this is a proposed three-year repayment term, we just wanted to put a, a disclosure out there that, uh, assessed values might be different than what they've been historically. Historically, the library has received a, a net assessed value increase.
And would that affect our bond capacity going forward, depending on what happened to the values?
It would, it absolutely would, depending on the library's strategy about tax rate and the general obligation capacity. If that net assessed value were to decrease, then we would be able to move principal back, maybe incur a little extra interest expense, but we could still stay within the three point one eight cents of the library's goal.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Currently, this is our proposed repayment term. You'll see that is the three-year repayment term, that's in blue. And the dashed line is our estimate for the debt service tax rate. So you'll see that with the three-year repayment term, uh, we're estimating those payment levels to be the same in twenty twenty-six, estimating that, uh, that the tax rate would also be the same, but that uh, the library's, uh, debt service tax rate, uh, could fall in the future. And again, all debt being repaid by twenty thirty, so we are not extending this bond's maturity beyond any of the currently outstanding debt that the library has. So this is a summary of the res- of the information within your resolutions tonight. And I would be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
All right, any questions from the board? Okay, um, so this is the time where I will invite public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on these bonds? All right, uh, if there are no comments, we are going to close that. And, um, we'll consider a motion to close the public hearing.
We will close the public hearing.
All right, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? We will have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
The motion's carried, the public meeting is now adjourned and the regular meeting is reconvened. All right, there we go, perfect, thank you very much. Okay, uh, so we have a couple of resolutions before us. Um, first resolution is resolution twenty twenty-five, excuse me, resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five, preliminary determination reimbursement and bond resolution. Um, would you like to discuss the resolution?
Um, as Mr. Jeff Quackenbush stated, this is the preliminary determination, um, reimbursement and bond resolution. And this is, um, for, um, our long-term bond for twenty twenty-five. This receive a due pass out of our finance committee.
Okay, great. Uh, so resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five regarding the preliminary determination reimbursement and bond resolution for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six multi-facility, long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project, received a positive recommendation from the finance committee. So the chair would request a second on such a recommendation.
Second.
It's been seconded, is there any discussion? All right, we will now have a roll call vote to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five regarding the preliminary determination reimbursement and bond resolution for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six multi-family, long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved. The motion is carried, let's move on to resolution twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five, which is the appropriation resolution for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six multi-facility, long-term capital maintenance and equipment update project.
This also received a positive due pass from the finance committee.
Right, so resolution twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five regarding, uh, the appropriation resolution for that same bond. I'm not going to say it again. Uh, I think we all know what it is at this point. Uh, received a positive recommendation from the finance committee, so the chair would request a second to such a recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, there being a motion, there being a, uh, a positive recommendation and a second, we'll have a roll call vote to approve resolution twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved. The motion is carried. Now we will move on to resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five.
Um, the next resolution, twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, I'd like to invite Deb Lambert.
And thank you very much to Baker Tilly, my counsel.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Beederman and board members, Mr. Hill and Lolita. Um, so I'm excited to bring to you the twenty-sixth year that we've been awarded the Marion County Internet Library Grant. We are the grant stewards for this in providing twelve databases, uh, to all Indianapolis schools and universities, high schools and universities, I should say, that provide, um, homework, research, um, to students throughout Indianapolis. Um, the total for this grant is four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and some change. Um, four hundred and forty-five dollars, I'm sorry, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, thousand dollars at four hundred and forty-five. Um, we received this grant, um, from the library fund of the Central Indiana Community Foundation. And as I mentioned, this is the twenty-sixth year that we've managed it. Um, anybody with a library card or on campuses of any of these schools can access the databases. And we serve as fiscal agents for purchasing, um, managing their contracts and tech support for the schools, um, to provide access to their students and their teachers for these databases. Um, we've added new, eight new schools, um, to the project that are now using, um, these databases compared to previous years. We've made specific outreach, uh, to schools, uh, that are unaware of this grant availability to them, to the databases that are available to them. Um, and the databases are selected by an advisory committee made up for, with representatives from the universities and several of the public schools, um, the public high schools, um, that advise on what is needed for the community. Um, on the second page, if you have that, um, on the slides, it lists the databases. Nope, doesn't look like that's a part of it. Okay. Um, but the databases cover biography, literature, um, history, um, and current issues and providing information to students as well as the World Book Online, um, encyclopedia and other resources through World Book Online. And, um, on behalf of all the Marion County Internet Library participants, we asked the board to approve this, uh, grant and our management of it and to pay the vendor, vendors for the databases for twenty-five, twenty-six.
This also receive a positive due pass out of finance committee.
Okay, so resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five regarding the Marion County Internet Library Grant database renewals, received a positive recommendation from the finance committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
All right, now that there's a mu- a positive, uh, recommendation and a second, is there any discussion? Yes.
Is there any changes from last year to this year on that list?
Um, this is the second year that we've had World Book Encyclopedia and the entire suite. Um, but there was one databases that was dropped. But we picked it up with the library subscriptions and I'm sorry, I don't remember what that particular one was. Um, but the, um, library fund has reduced our grant about fifty thousand in the last two years each year. Um, it's, it's a huge amount of the library fund and, um, they want to be able to, um, fund other things through it.
Thanks. Great, thank you, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved. The motion is carried, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb.
Right, we're still going.
Yeah, we're still going.
Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, approval of library liability insurance policies and contracted agency fees for the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library Risk Management Strategy for the period of August first, twenty twenty-five to August first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, um, this is for, um, insurance renewal. And again, this starts August first, twenty twenty-five and ends, um, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, this is a coverage for, um, risk of various loss exposure related to towards theft, damage and destruction of assets, errors or emissions to job-related illnesses or injuries to employees, natural disasters and cybersecurity incidents. I am CPO, contracts with insurance broker Gallagher, who analyzes and recommends co- coverage. If you look on page twenty-five of your board report, you'll see, um, the premium rate analysis. Um, the workers' compensation, it increased, um, fourteen percent. Um, this is due to increase in exposure. Um, this is the increase that we receive for salaries for twenty twenty-five. Um, we also address the workers, I mean, um, the good wage initiative and also address compression during this time. So therefore the total increase was six percent would increase our exposure, which increase our workers' compensation of fourteen percent. Then our property tax, I mean, property tax, you know, that's on my mind. Um, the property insurance, um, that increased twelve point three four percent. Um, that's mainly due to Glendale coming about, uh, you know, the new, uh, building for Glendale. And then the inland, um, increased, well, slightly, it stayed flat at one point two percent. The general library, uh, liability increased almost six percent. Um, and then the other stayed flat except for the umbrella. And the umbrella will include the workers' compensation and the property tax, I mean, property insurance and which that combination came up to an increase of nine point six percent. So for a total increase of, um, general liability insurance of ten point five nine percent, um, this is, um, a little lower than it was last year. Uh, last year was at ten point seven nine percent. Uh, however, the total increase is forty-six, um, thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars for this increase. So, um, again, this receive a positive due pass in finance committee.
Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five regarding approval of liability insurance policies and contracted agency fees for the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library Risk Management Strategy for the policy period, August first, twenty twenty-five, August first, twenty twenty-six, received a positive recommendation from the finance committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, or it's passed through committee and seconded, any discussion?
Dr. Matata.
Oh, no. I think we've got a, we got a discussion.
Question. Wh- what's the difference between the budgeted amount and this amount?
Um, how much is that budget for the twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Um, well, actually, it's a combination of two fiscal years. So, um, I do have an enough budget, um, for this. I think it came right, um, like a thousand dollars under. So, yeah.
Good job, thank you.
I don't know.
All right, any other questions?
Just a comment, we had extensive conversation about the increase of insurance. And, uh, it's so important that we have adequate coverage for all. So thank you for bringing it in and making sure that we have the necessary coverage for all of our, thank you.
Thank you, any other, anything else?
We do not expect to have this kind of, uh, break next year, that the amount will be lower as opposed to how it was last year. Uh, around the country, it seems that these type things are really increasing exponentially. So we are in- So we are in good shape considering what we've done this past year in terms of compensation to employees, etc. We're in a good place right now for this.
Great, thank you. You good?
No, I'm just preempting for the next year's budget.
Okay, alright. Alright, let's have a call of the roll.
Doctor Matata.
Approved.
Doctor Plasio.
Approved.
Doctor Riolo.
Approved.
Doctor White.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approve. The motion is carried. Now we'll move on to discussion of the twenty-two-six proposed budget.
Yes, this is just a budget briefing. Just to remind everyone, this is just a draft. I would do a high-level budget presentation and at the next board meeting. We're still missing some vital information like revenue, which I should receive before the end of this month, which may be in a couple of days or at least later than August the first. So this week still. So in your board packet, you'll see the briefing report, which will reflect some information regards to the operation fund stating that I will not have this information until the end of this week by August the first. And then we have the BRF, which is the Bond and Interest Redemption Fund. That just reflects what our debt service budget liability is for twenty-two-six. This is excluding the twenty-two-six bond that we're trying to get because we will have two payments for that in twenty-two-six. However, I don't have that information. And then for LRF, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that was the same that we have for this current year. And the Renting Day Fund is one million dollars, which is the same amount we have for this current twenty-two-five budget. So this budget briefing will really kind of review the expenditures. The Character One, which is the Personal Service, although I want to keep saying Personnel Service, but the way the city is set up, they call it Personal Service. So there's gonna be an increase of eight point seven-one percent, and that was about three point five million dollars increase. And this will be, this increase includes sustaining the twenty-two-five increase that we have for our salaries. Again, that is for the dollar twenty salary rate increase, the Good Wage Initiative increase, and also compression issues that we addressed. And also bringing individuals up to market rate. Then it was on the wrong page. And then we're assumed that we're gonna have a mere increase for twenty-two-six up to three percent. I'm aiming to do three percent, however, I just don't know until the revenue comes in. That is my goal. And then we also have twenty-seven pays in twenty-two-six, so that increases our our Personnel Services. And then we have Sunday premium hours and then currently we're seeing negotiation period for the twenty-two-six health insurance. I kind of budgeted for four percent increase. Hoping that it doesn't go over more than that, but let's just see how the negotiation goes. And then, of course, we got five plan first. So that was one of the reason why the eight point, the eight percent increase for, eight point seven percent increase in Character One Personnel Services. For Character Two, which is Supplies, and there's an increase of nine point four-six percent of three hundred and four thousand dollars. And this is mainly due to inflation and basically adjusting everybody, every line item to stay similar to what is twenty-two-five. And then for Character Three, which is Other Services and Charges, this has an increase of seven percent, which is about one point two million. And this is in, due to inflations and other contractor services aligning with twenty-two-four actuals. And then increasing requests for professional development and increasing social, I mean, security service budget and also the cleaning service. And then material contractor due to the cost of rising eBooks. Then Character Four is an increase of three point four-one percent, and that's an increase in books and materials. So the total increase of the overall budget compared to this year, twenty-two-five, is eight point two-five percent in increase, which is eighty-five million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars compared to this year of eighty-three million, five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And again, this is a draft, some of these numbers can change. Sorry about my voice, depending on the revenue, but hopefully we can keep it similar to what it is right now that I'm providing in this budget briefing.
Great. Any, any questions from the Board at this point?
Yes, please. Another personal privilege here. Because of the budget reductions and other cuts going on around the country from the national level to state and local, a legitimate concern was was stated about our functional operation efficiency level, meaning we were looking at our different departments and saying, are we operating at the proper efficiency for those areas? And one of the concerns pointed out by the Executive Committee happened to, I guess, point out an area that we really did need to add staff. And it's important that we understand that we must continue to make our efforts to, of course, to pay our staff and workers what they need to have a decent living wage. However, when we look at our operational status, we must ask our executive team to continue to give rationales for requests for increases. And I think our leadership model now that we use is excellent for that because Mr. Hill is not a dictating CEO. He takes the input of his executive team seriously. So when we have, I guess, the need to add additional staff, the Board will always be seeking one thing first, and that's the answer to the why question. And if we get the answer to the why question, then of course, we can expedite all rationales for those kind of things. So that, that came up in this climate that we have in this country now. A lot of people are getting cut and reduced and not looking at the unintended consequences. We don't want to be that, in that situation. So it's important just to think about that and through the Finance Committee, we have to question that and our main question will always be why. And if we get the why, then we don't have to worry about attempting to micromanage. But our leadership operational mechanism now under Mr. Hill's leadership, it's ideal to give us the answer why. And so I just want to make sure that saying, I want to commend the administration, the union, and others for understanding that we're not finished yet with trying to compensate our employees, but communication is the key. And we always start with why.
Thank you. Doctor Plasio, did you have a comment as well?
Yes. So on the proposed draft of this budget, there's a line, three, six, one, zero, 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 says income is increased by over a thousand percent. How does that work?
What line? I'm sorry.
Three, six, one, zero, zero, zero.
Oh, three, six.
It's an interest income.
Interest income. Well, it's because in twenty-two-five, we only budgeted seventy-two thousand. And then for twenty-two-six, we budgeted nine, I'm nine hundred and twenty thousand. So therefore, there's a big increase that way. And the reason that we increased it, if you recall in our Treasury Report, we have received close to, I don't have it. Like seven, maybe seven hundred thousand already for, as of June. Even with the percentage of the interest going down, we're still going, we're estimated to receive close to nine hundred sixty in twen- nine, I mean, twenty-two-six.
Is there something that we did to, for that change to happen?
Earlier in twenty, well, halfway through twenty-two-four, we changed the way we were earning interest. We did a sweep account. And this year, we also decreased our PEG in our, you know, at the bank to, to, to incur more interest on our, our revenue. So it does a nightly sweep for, you know, the total amount that's in our bank, and then that's how we're increasing our interest. And this is something different that wasn't done in the past. So with our banking relationship, we developed this to determine that we can, and of course, also that increase in interest as well.
Is this true increase revenue or, or is this something that where revenue is going up in one account and coming down in another account?
Increase revenue, the interest earned from, from our revenue.
Very good.
Increased budgeted revenue?
Yeah. Right.
So we based it based on the interest that we're earning, knowing that it is, it may dwindle down a little, but hopefully it won't dwindle down too much before the end of twenty-two-six.
Are we using the same percentage for insurance for next year, like around eleven percent increase?
For the expense for the insurance? Actually, yes, yes.
Eleven?
About twelve, but it's close.
And then the nineteen percent increase in, in cost of supplies, that's inflationary. What was the increase from last fiscal year to this fiscal year? What was our projection last time?
For supplies?
Yes.
That is on the second page of the twenty-two-five versus twenty-two-eight. So for the twenty-two-five budget was, and I don't have my glasses on, but I think it's one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Percentage wise?
Percentage wise, as far as the increase to for the twenty-two-six budget, it's nineteen point four.
But what was the, the percentage increase from last fiscal year to this one? As we're projecting nineteen, I, I want to understand.
I don't have that information in front of me, but it was probably, probably, I want to guess, maybe ten percent, you know?
So we're including it?
We include it as the inflation every year.
And everything, okay.
Oh, for the supplies, the tariff, yeah, that's why the nineteen point four.
The projected tariffs, okay, thanks. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Alright, thank you very much. I'm gonna continue with the last slide.
So this last slide is the updates. Next month, at the Board, we'll have an audit presentation because the audit is completed. And then at the Finance Committee on August the twelfth, we'll have a long-term plan review prior to the budget presentation. Okay, and I think I said I was doing the budget presentation at the Board, but it's gonna be at the Finance Committee. So let me correct myself.
Okay. Includes your report?
That's it.
Alright, thank you. There we go. So little did you guys all know that I've been storing up all the extra minutes from all of the previous meetings? We're using them all today. So let's move on to Diversity Policy, Human Resources Committee. Doctor Plasio, anything for today?
Now, we did not have a, a Board Action Recommendation this month, but I appreciate the public comments from today. I was suggesting changes or reviewing policies, so I personally would like to start looking into that. And thanks again for bringing that up.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the Facilities Committee. Doctor Riolo.
Yes, I promised that our committee would have a strong showing this month, and we're going for it. So please invite Roberta and Adam to tell us the stories.
So people, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us back to talk about the naming of a study room at the Irvington Branch Library. And this did pass out of the Facilities Committee with a positive recommendation. But what we are asking the Library Board to approve is naming the Michael and Deborah Williams Study Room at the soon-to-be-renovated Irvington Library. And the background behind this gift, this naming, is that in two thousand nine, Michael was the manager of the Irvington Library. And at that time, the library did not have a study room. And Michael and his wife donated the funds to convert the café kitchen into a study room. So at the time, we offered, we meaning the Library Foundation, we offered to seek a naming opportunity with the Library Board. However, Michael elected to defer that recognition because he was the manager at the branch at the time. So past, this past May, he contacted me and said he was ready to move forward with that naming opportunity. And so that's what we bring to you today for consideration.
It did earn a due pass from the committee.
Excellent. Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five regarding the approval of a naming opportunity at the Irvington Branch, received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would request a second on such a recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Doctor Matata.
Approved.
Doctor Plasio.
Approved.
Doctor Riolo.
Approved.
Doctor White.
Approved.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Thank you.
Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to Resolution thirty dash twenty-two-five. Resolution thirty dash twenty-two-five is approval to award a services contract for the new bookmobiles project. And as I leaned on Roberta for the last resolution, I will lean on Maggie to be my, the subject matter expert for how the bookmobiles are used should any questions arise. I'll walk you through the procurement and she can talk you through the use. Currently, outreach uses two bookmobiles to facilitate outreach to patrons of Marion County. Our bookmobiles are approximately ten years old and are at the end of their useful life. We used a request for proposal process, sent out public notice, sent directly to ten vendors. And I apologize, that should be pre-RFP conference, not SOQ, on May third. We received four SOPs and a four-person evaluation team went through all four of those responses. And we recommend award to Farber Specialty Vehicles out of Ohio. The submitted cost was six hundred five thousand, three hundred three, three hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. This slightly exceeds the budgeted amount of six hundred one thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. The difference of three thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents will be transferred from the project in which we upgraded our patron counters from a couple of years back. And they had approximately thirty thousand dollars left over from that project. As far as community impacts, the vendor is, again, out of state, as I mentioned, Ohio. We expect delivery of both bookmobiles within ten to fourteen months. Our hope and our goal is to receive them before the start of the twenty-two-six, twenty-two-seven school year. And yep, that's, that's the last slide.
It received a due pass from committee to come to the full board.
Resolution thirty dash twenty-two-five regarding approval to award a services contract for the new bookmobiles project, received a positive, positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee. So the Chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Right, it's been positively recommended and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have, oh, yeah, please.
Just because we've been talking so much about insurance, is there any projection whether it'll be a substantial increase or decrease when we have two new bookmobiles? No project, and one, where I'm still thinking of insurance, so now that we'll have two new bookmobiles, is there any sense of that? Is that gonna be way higher or are we gonna? Thinking they'll be worth more than the old ones.
Most likely it's gonna be increased, but I don't have that.
Thanks.
Yep, Doctor Plasio.
Yep, Dr. Plasio. Just this question, what, what would be the lifetime of these vehicles?
Approximately ten years.
Okay.
Yeah, our current vehicles are LDV and our vehicles before, our current vehicles were also Farber. And both sets lasted approximately ten years.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hit the, the old Farbers lasted twenty?
Our Farver is before LDV actually lasted twenty years. So Farber has a good track.
We're programming ten years, right? Even though they, they could last for twenty, okay.
Will they be named frog and toad again?
It was just, just a.
We might have another naming contest. I think that might be up to Mary Bar. That's my pump. That's what I want.
My kids, my kids would love that. All right, uh, all right, any other discussion? Okay, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion is carried.
Thanks for your work on that.
Yes.
It was a lot of work.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, we'll move on to resolution thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five.
I get to do this one on my own. Uh resolution thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five is approval to award a services contract for AMH. That is automated material handler maintenance. This is maintenance for our sorting machines. We previously had a contract approved with uh Lingso Systems uh per resolution thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two. That was three years prior. The contract includes two PM, that's preventive maintenance visits uh per sorter, per calendar year, a twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five hotline support, and we have tested that and it is true. Um extended parts warranty and technician dispatch services. These uh, this is the list of the locations with our sorters. Uh we have uh procured sorters between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one. They are not approaching, but getting up there for end of life. Um looking to replace them is in discussions, uh but it's not imminent. So uh we have requested that this be approved using the special purchasing method uh as stated in Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash ten dash eight. Compatibility of equipment, accessories, or replacement parts. Uh for history, our sorters were manufactured by a company named PV Supa. They were uh subsequently bought by Lingso Systems and along with all of their proprietary software and hardware information. They are the only provider that would be able to provide PV Supa parts. Um they are actually in the process of replacing several of their customers' old PV Supa sorters. And so they are currently, for the next probably twenty-four months, have an abundance of parts. But after that, they will be uh rapidly diminishing. Uh two-year contract is two, approximately two hundred eleven dollars, four hundred seventy, two hundred eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh the uh vendor is out of state. Our goal is to subcontract with a local XBE. We currently use Richard Lopez Electrical uh for all of our local repairs that can be done without a Lingso technician. Uh for the more intense repairs, they do send somebody out, they fly somebody out for those repairs.
Dr. Riolo did this.
It did receive a due pass out of committee.
Excellent, thank you.
We liked it.
Very good. So resolution thirty-one twenty twenty-five regarding approval to award services contract for AMH maintenance received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second on such recommendation.
Second.
Uh it's been moved, it's been positively recommended and seconded. Any discussion? I had one question for you. Um are we, did you say we're gonna stockpile some of those parts?
Uh Lingso Systems is currently um dismantling old PV Supa systems and they are stockpiling parts. Uh we have um uh I believe we keep three of the roller units on hand along with uh several other, you know, A and B items, but Lingso will stockpile the C and below.
Okay, so we can't stockpile and then resell them to other libraries at a premium?
That's called a hustle.
I refer that to legal counsel.
All right, thank you very much. Um uh any other discussion? Okay, uh let's have a call of the roll.
Dr. Tadic.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. All right, that motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Riolo, Library Foundation update. We've got Ms. Roberta Yakers here. All right, welcome.
And company.
And company, this is great.
Brought my friends. So in your packet, there is an uh a written report from us to you, and um I just call that to your attention. The first thing that we wanted to share with you was um an update about our strategic plan. And then after I walk you through that, that's in your meeting book, um my colleague Bethany Watson, our vice president for development, will give you some um ideas for the board fundraising training that you all requested, and we have a sample agenda. She would love your feedback. And then we'd also, after that, we're going to have Kelly Kears come up. She's our new development officer and she's going to tell you a little bit about her role and share a library impact story with you. So that is our um, our thing. And going to the strategic plan, I just need to navigate to it to my, on my phone, so give me just a moment. I had it all pulled up and now I'm, I don't have it. Yes, I have it right here. Okay. So one of the, the big thing that I hope if you no not, see, notice nothing else about our strategic plan is that we really tried very hard to align and support the library strategic plan. And in order to accomplish that, we had some very important participants in our strategic planning process. We had Ray Biederman, who was our library trustee representative at the time, and Gregory Hill, and then also McKenzie. And so their input in helping us to stay aligned was, was very important. So um our vision is a stronger public library for a stronger Indianapolis, and our mission is to elevate the commu- uh Indianapolis Public Library by activating the community's generosity. Um our core belief is that strong public libraries are essential for a civic, civil society. And we have values around service, ingenuity, collaboration, and belonging. When you think about our goals and our objectives, we gave a summary, we have a much more detailed uh chart that our board approved, but in terms of what would be digestible and not a lot of fundraising godly book for the general public. Um our first goal is to grow and engage the foundation's current and future donor base. And our goal is to raise seven point two million between, over the next three years, between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-seven. The next goal we have is to sustain a mutually supportive, collaborative, and strategically aligned relationship with the library. The library is our most important relationship, so we, like every important relationship in your life, it's important to invest in that. And for us, that looks like giving very good service to the library, being easy to work with, and also identifying how we can best direct the dollars that we're able to raise and the dollars that we have uttered at our hand, at our fingertips to best support the library's needs. And so continually identifying if there are gaps that we could be filling through fundraising. And we do have a goal of investing at least seven point four million dollars in the library over the next three years. And then our last goal is about prioritizing growth opportunities for our staff and board as well as for the foundation itself. And so this is really about managing our staff, managing our board, um developing strategic partnerships to you know, meet our, our goals and to assess our organizational culture and to just um align our budget and financial practices to achieve growth. So this is very much just about being, that's how you have your, your goal and your strategic plan of being a workplace of choice. This is about us being a workplace of choice and a volunteer place of choice as well. And just continuing to learn about best practices and implementing them. So that's basically our strategic plan in a nutshell. I just wanted you to know what that was. And um again, we have more detailed tactics, me- metrics and measures. But in terms of uh, we thought this would be a good summary to share with the public. So any questions on this?
Questions?
Thank you. I'm gonna turn things over now to Bethany and she is going to share, again, this is in your meeting book, uh a, a sample agenda for our board fundraising training to get your thoughts on that.
Thank you, everyone. Uh so September eighth, we have a fundraising training scheduled. Um so we, uh Roberta and I put together the uh agenda that's in the meeting book. And we just kind of wanted to get your feedback. Um this training is for you, so we want to be receptive to the, the things that you're interested in hearing specifically about fundraising and about the library foundation. So the way that we have it set up now is um the first, um first topic is uh fundraising one-on-one, kind of the fundraising basics, um the science and art that go into fundraising, any national philanthropic trends we take a look at, and then any factors that affect philanthropy that we take into account as we're doing uh projections. And then the next section, we'll look at how the foundation specifically supports the library and our pretty robust system and how we uh look at the programs that we think we'll be able to fund and work with the library to communicate that. And then finalizing it by talking about our specific fundraising program, our goals and our tactics, and then the overall role uh that our staff and board play together. Um so I want to open up to feedback um to everyone here. If you have any thoughts or things that you think are missing that we need to talk about and that you'd like to hear more about, um uh please let us know. We like to open that up for feedback.
Need, any comments on the agenda?
Just a quick question. To what extent do you already know what we already know about what we can do? Because instead you started with one-on-one. Did you already ascertain from us what we already know?
That's a good question. I, I think we took into account, um granted, I'm very new, but taking into account just the general understanding. But um what we wanted to kind of show is when we, when we think about fundraising, prospecting, looking at who are we thinking about for prospects? Um who do we think would be a potential friend of the library? And then how do we take them from a prospect to a donor? Is kind of the overarching um key for our fundraising one-on-one uh background. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
I do think that we figured there were probably different levels of experience with fundraising. And so when we do our own board members, um we, this is generally the kind of training that they feel helpful, that they find helpful. So I think that might have caused us to make some assumptions about what you might also find helpful. So if you would like us to give you a little bit more of an outline about that, um what we, those topics we'd cover. And if the overall consensus of the group is that it's too basic, we can definitely, you know, um reduce that part a little bit. So we can definitely, if you, we want to make sure that it's a good use of your time.
Thank you. Any, any other thoughts on that from anyone? Okay, looks like you got the uh the stamp, stamp of approval, that's good.
Thank you all.
Okay, um and then I will thank you, Bethany, and then we'll have Kelly come up and she's going to share an update on what she's doing and a wonderful story we heard from our library colleagues.
Well, hello, thank you for your time tonight. Um I won't take up too much of your time. I know we've been here for, for a minute. Uh but I just wanted to introduce myself and for you to get to know me a little bit. Uh my name is Kelly Kears. I have been with the foundation since beginning of June, so still fairly new. I most recently came from the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra. Um so in my role with the foundation, I am really focused on our mid-level giving folks. Uh so this is a great dedicated pool of donors that we haven't tapped into as much as we can. So I am really focusing on building that roadmap for us to be able to use this year and in the years to come to, to capitalize on that in, in quantity and quality. I will also be managing our Friends of the Library program. Um there's been a lot of great ideas so far to, to improve that initiative and to entice people, to make it more exciting. So people want to be a part of it. And lastly, I will also be the staff lead for our staff campaign later on this year. So that's a little bit about me. Um I would love to get to know you all, so feel free to introduce yourselves, shoot me an email, take one of my cards. Love to get to know you. And while I have your attention, wanted to share a touching story we received recently from our Irvington Branch. Um this story was made possible for, from our partnership with the Indigo Foundation. Um and one of our youth services librarians shared this with us, so I'm just gonna read it off for you. "Today I helped a man get a bus pass. When he approached the desk, he started crying. He said he was struggling with his health and he has had multiple mini strokes this past year and was just trying to get to the doctor. When I gave him the pass, he thanked me multiple times. He was so grateful to get to the doctor, he started crying even harder. He said he was told to come to the library to get a pass, but he wasn't sure if we would have any available. So he was so thankful we did. I told him we are always happy to help." So the Indigo Foundation this year supplied us with seven hundred and seventy-three bus passes. This is just one story. So I think it's really empowering for us to think about the seven hundred and seventy-three stories that each of these bus passes hold. So thank you for your time tonight. Um and like I said, I, I would love to get to know you all, so feel, feel free to reach out.
Thank you and welcome.
And that is the end of our report. Any questions for, for me?
Just a quick question about the seven million dollars that, that I like that we're thinking that way. What are thoughts about where that's gonna could be going to, allocating major projects besides the regular?
Well, a lot of it would go towards the regular community action plans. Those are the building blocks of our budget. So um in addition to that, we're having some conversations with the library's executive leadership team about some of the things that are um in the strategic plan that could potentially be grouped into lar- a proposal to like larger funders. Uh so something that's a little bit more holistic and maybe a bigger picture view than the, the community action plan process, but we're also expecting the community action plans. So there's a couple ways, but it's very much about using the library's channels that we have for discovering what the library's needs are. And then we align our opportunities based upon our fundraising expectancies and funding that we can pull from our endowments. And often our funding is restricted. Ninety-five percent of the money we ha- we give the libraries restricted for a specific purpose. So we have to play matchmaker between what we think we can raise and that, that purposes of those funds and then what the library's needs are.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. It's here for the foundation. Right, we'll move on to the report of the CEO. Uh Mr. Gregory Hill.
All right, thank you. Uh first is the confirmatory resolution uh thirty-two twenty twenty-five, which is the resolution regarding finances, travel, and personnel that occurs between each board meeting. It is in its typical format and I would ask for your approval of resolution thirty-two twenty twenty-five.
Resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty-five regarding finances, personnel, and travel. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Uh hearing none, we'll have a call of the roll.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Plasio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
And Mr. Biederman.
Approved. The motion is carried. Mr. Hill.
All right, moving forward. Uh I will give a brief uh presentation. Uh this presentation highlights activities for the month of June. Uh your full report recou- covers additional information, which includes uh digital inclusion highlights for social work, and there's additional branch program highlights in your board packet. Also, uh there is an extensive list of N D P L media uh mentions. The agenda we'll start off with is um their typical day. We'll do a program review, summer reading program, Q2 goes, tell a survey. I'll do staff recognition, some upcoming events. And then uh Ms. Marion McKenzie still will do a statistical report for quarter two. But I'll make this is, uh I'll go through this quickly. The first item, or let me, I think I, is um a typical day. So on any given uh day, we circulate approximately fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy items. Um that's an increase of about eight percent from a typical day in May. Uh a top branches for circulation was the Glendale Branch with a little bit over fifty thousand. Uh Franklin Road at thirty-four thousand, and then the Lawrence Branch at twenty-nine thousand. The Central Library, our main hub, is at thirty-four thousand. And I'd like to give a shout out to the NOR Branch, who was actually uh number four in physical circulation at twenty-eight thousand, even though they just opened back up, so thank you. Um new cardholders, we had about a hundred and one. Visitors, seven thousand, four hundred and sixty on any given day. That was an increase of about ten percent from the previous month. Uh top branches for visitors included the Glendale Branch at seventeen thousand. Southport, a little bit over twelve thousand, and Fort Ben at eleven thousand, four sixty-four. And again, the Central Library was at uh thirty-four thousand, four twenty-eight. We had about twenty-four programs on any typical day as well. Programs across the system for adults, we had two hundred and fifty-one programs with about one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen participants. Uh some of the highlights of adult programming, which uh include three D printing. We had book discussions throughout the system. We had a guided painting session. We had a guided painting session, paleo art printmaking. We also had a stone carving program using Indiana limestone, which had about 61 guests. And then that bottom photo on your right is the simple strength training, which would happen here at Southport, which had about 67 people at their location. Youth programs, we had 541 youth programs with about 14,419 participants. Some programs across the system included paper making program. We had seven sessions on how to create pulp and press materials into usable paper, which was an excellent program. And then also the junior paleontologist, which was hosted by the Indiana State Museum, which allowed guests to get up close with ancient artifacts and fossils. And that was a heavily attended program as well. Summer reading, I think it was mentioned earlier that we had passed the 20 million mark, but as the time when I put the presentation in the board packet together, we were at 18.2 million. So congratulations again on passing the 20 million mark. We had a little bit over 24,000 participants, which included adult and juvenile. And then the programming, I just mentioned, that was the junior paleontologist program. Again, that was at 15 locations and we had about 329 patrons who participated in that program. And then the program development area PDA will give a full report on summer reading program at next month's board meeting. So in your packet also, I list goals, goals for quarter two. We had our staff engagement survey, which was completed in May. We had around 409 staff who completed the survey, which is almost about 70% of our staff, which is really great. We communicated the results in a special newsletter and also in our May 21st town hall, which also we identified some action steps that we wanted to take that came from the survey. One of those was clear procedures on reclassification, salary appeals, and salary negotiations. And also the presence of LSA library security assistance at the Martin Dell Brightwood branch. They were, I think they had a part-time library assistant, security assistant, now they have a full-time. And then we're still working on just surveying all the branches to make sure that we have adequate library security assistance at each location. The second one was the business continuity plan. It is designed to assist NDPL after an emergency to reestablish essential functions within 30 days. It provides a roadmap for continuing to deliver patron services should an emergency have a long-lasting effect. This is not something that is required, but is something that as the executive leadership team that we thought that we should have in place. Thank you to all the executive leadership team members who worked on that. Adam Parsons, our chief operational services officer, was the project lead on that. We have gotten all the feedback on that and we should be posting that on our SharePoint page shortly. I think we were going to try to outsource that at first, but it costs a lot of money. But we have a talented executive leadership team, so we did that ourselves. So congratulations to the team for putting that together. Lastly, was the library policy update. Let me get to my note here, sorry. So we continue to work, do work on the library policies. Tomorrow, you should receive an email, all the board members of eight policy proposals, eight policy proposals that was developed with input from staff and patrons. And one of those is the tabling policy. So Dr. Palacio, you should get that in an email tomorrow and that'll give the board a chance to weigh in on all the policies before we come to the DPHR committee in August. Next is the tell us survey. The tell us survey is something that we started, I'd say, the last year and a half. It gives us a chance to let the patrons, for the patrons to tell us how they feel about the service that we provide. Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie, our strategic planning assessment officer who takes care of that. We generally ask four questions. And then with the new self-checks that we have, there's a QR code that's generated at the bottom of that, so they can actually scan that QR code to do the survey as well. Just looking at the surveys, that's what we received in June. We had seven from the Central Library, 58 from the East Region, 35 from the Mid-South, and then 34 from the West Region. Again, we just started this recently, so hopefully this will give us some great information on what we could do better to improve our customer service. But looking at the results that we have received so far, the patrons really appreciate our customer service and the folks in the branch. Thank you for the job that you are doing to provide exceptional services to our patrons. Next, I want to do staff recognition. We just had our quarterly reception that was held at the ISCR at the Central Library last, I think it was last week, I do believe. And we had a really good turnout, so I really appreciate the executive leadership team members who show up and to make sure that we let staff know that we appreciate that their efforts. And I'm just going to read off the names here. Peer support, and this is for the month of June, was Abby Welch from Martin Dell Brightwood, Patron Services, Aaron Davis from Hallville, Paige Excellence, Emmett Miller from Lawrence. Team Excellence was the Encyclopedia of Indianapolis staff, which included Joty Vertarame and Jessica Fisher. Next, other duties assigned was Robin Blankenship. Community involvement was Jared White from Central. Volunteer partnerships was Amanda Hatcher, who is a volunteer at West Perry. And then the summer reading program was Lacey Strahan from Decatur and Shelby Graham Haven from West Perry. Can we give them a round of applause? And next, upcoming events, we have the Dvi Drum Ensemble on Saturday, August the 9th. And then we have the, on Saturday, August the 16th, in partnership with the African-American History Committee, we'll be partnering with SHE, which stands for She Has Everything, which is an indie event to bring the SHE event to Central Library, a platform for Black-owned businesses to increase their customers' awareness. And then on Monday, August the 18th, the Indy Library Store Book Sale Half Price Day is from 12 to 7. And then next, we have, I want to talk really quickly about the adult universal changing stations. We have partnered with Tangram to raise awareness about the need for adult universal changing stations. Station will be available at Central Library, which will be coming soon, the Fort Bend branch, NOR branch, and the Pike branch. Adult or universal changing stations are full-size changing tables that allow individuals with mobility issues to be able to take care of their needs. And with that, I will go ahead and show a quick video. That's about a couple minutes.
My name is Darrellin Lynn Jones, and this is my son, my joy boy, Will Jones. Like any mother, when he was born, I wished for his happiness and health. But when he was diagnosed with cerebral palsy, my husband and I realized we needed to expand that focus. It wasn't just about Will's happiness and health anymore, but also ensuring his safety and inclusion in society. Traveling, a routine occurrence for most families, requires my family to pack even more tangible resources every time we leave the house, no matter how short the trip. Any place we go must be accessible with parking, have a ramp, wider doorways and pathways, and ADA compliant bathrooms and door openers. But it's more than resources and access. A space needs to be physically accessible, and it must be a welcoming, inclusive environment. Our list of places and spaces we can access shrinks the exploable world for my son and our family. And because of inaccessibility and a lack of acceptance and understanding, we often feel isolated.
Since 1985, Tangram has served children and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities throughout central Indiana. I'm Sam Chris, the CEO at Tangram, and we work with clients and their families to move beyond the perceived limits of physical and social barriers and champion them to be involved and fully engaged in life. With the aim of removing these barriers and improving the quality of life for Hoosiers with disabilities, we're excited to partner with the Indianapolis Public Library in installing universal changing stations in multiple library branches across the city. There is no better partner with a focus on inclusion than the Indianapolis Public Library. Not only do they have a culture that embraces everyone, but their numerous locations and ease of access make them the ideal partner in this endeavor. With over 40 million Americans providing unpaid care to adults, Tangram understands the need for suitable changing stations in public spaces. In partnering with the Indianapolis Public Library, the community can access universal changing stations at the Central Library, the NOR branch, and the Pike branch to add to the library's already existing station at the Fort Bend branch.
I love libraries. I always have. And when my son was younger, he would often accompany me to the Indianapolis Public Library to enjoy the children's programming. But as he grew, I wasn't able to take him into the bathroom and change him, so he stopped coming with me. Will is now 21 years old, and I am happy to be able to bring him back to the library because of the access these changing stations provide. Not only can we have Will participate in the library community again, but we can more easily engage in the surrounding areas. Our library trips can now turn into lunch outings or outdoor walks with a less stringent timetable. And having these universal changing stations in multiple branches has expanded our list of places and spaces we can go as a family. Libraries have always been welcoming public places, and they've served their communities beyond books with technology, media, programming, education, and providing safe spaces to gather. By adding universal changing stations, our public libraries are becoming even more accessible, embracing marginalized communities, and giving people the opportunity to come as they are.
All right, I'm trying to get back to where, all right. Does anyone have any questions for, for me?
Just a quick one. Bethany, thank you so much for the report. In the tell us survey, the East Region stood out more, and I know this is a new survey. What made that one so much greater, the questions that they answered and that type of thing?
I don't know. It may just be, honestly, maybe how the branches take the time to push it out to the patrons. So don't really know why. I know in the month of June or every, when we do this, I think it was June, we had the peak, peak week where we, we stress, you know, the surveys to our patrons, so that could be it as well. But thank you to all the regions. Thank you to all the branches who make sure that you, you provide, again, the exceptional customer service to our patrons.
Any other questions? Right, thank you.
And before we move on, I just want to say also, thank you to Ms. Karen Moore, Technology Supervisor. Thank you to Ms. Fiona Duke, Branch Manager, Southport. Thank you to all the branch managers. Thank you to all staff for all the work that you do every day. As we go through this board report tonight, you get to see all the work that's being done by the committees, by the board members, by staff, by the leadership. I just want to say thank you so much. There's a lot that goes on to run in the library, and I'm just ecstatic that I have a fantastic team who works day in and day out to make sure we do the right thing for the library. So thank you. And then I would like to have Ms. Mary Ann McKenzie come give the second quarter statistical report of operations.
Well, per usual, I come to you with a mountain of data right at the end of a long meeting. I have, as always, condensed down the longer packet that you have into just a handful of slides. I really want to highlight a couple things. We're about halfway through the year, and so this is a point to really think about, are we on track to meet or exceed where we were at the end of the prior year? And I'm happy to report in almost every metric, we are on track to meet or exceed. There's a couple possible exceptions, and we're going to look at some of those. And then also, it's the middle of the year, so end of quarter two, we transition out of the academic school year and into the summer. So you'll see some little variations in some of the data, and I'll try and point out where we see some expected quarterly changes that are mostly tied to those changes in engagement from students and educators. So to kick us off, I'm going to highlight three areas: cardholders, visits, and circulation. Those are sort of our big key metrics. We can get into more nuanced data in the larger packet if you have questions, but of course, I will also be returning to you to present a different way of visualizing some of this information into the next month or two to give you an update on the strategic plan. So we kept this one pretty high level for that reason. So first of all, let's start with circulation. Normally, I come and I show you physical circulation and what we call electronic circulation or ECIRK as two separate graphs. And I wanted to take this mid-year point to show you what these look like if we stack them on top of each other. And the reason for this is that because we've been talking with you month after month about physical circulation, sort of seeing a little bit of a downward trend. When we opened NOR and Pike, we expected to see a recovery, and we did see a pretty strong case for that. But we're still continuing to see physical CIRK just slide a little bit. And when you look at physical CIRK with ECIRK stacked on top of it, it looks like there's a possibility that we're continuing to see something that we kind of expect from the feedback we receive from our patrons, which is many of them are choosing electronic circulation. So here, if you look at that blue line, you'll see that since we began measuring the data the way that we do for electronic circulations in quarter one of 2024, we haven't seen a whole lot of variation in total circulation. Our total circulation numbers are pretty strong. But if you look at that orange bar for physical circulations, there's a little bit more variability. So on the whole, things are great because circulation is strong. At the end of the day, we don't care how you borrow, we just want to make sure that we offer something that meets your need in the format that you prefer. That said, we do know that electronic circulation has a slightly higher cost. So this, this is something, if this becomes a bigger trend, that we want to monitor closely because it can have a budgetary impact in the long term. And just to give you an idea of what this looks like for physical circulations, when I say a slight decrease, it's been about 1 or 2% per quarter. It's not huge, it's not alarming, and we are starting to see a little bit more of a recovery from NOR and Pike, but it is definitely persistent at this point. It's been there for about almost two years now. In contrast, and here I gave you a slightly different version of this graph, I wanted you to be able to clearly see 2025 stacked on top of 2024. Year to year, we're pretty consistently seeing a graph similar to this, where wherever we ended in the previous year, we are picking up and going upwards. So this is a pretty consistent upward trend in terms of eBooks, audiobooks, videos, and magazines. And again, that's great. We love to see our patrons embracing these resources, but it is something that we thought you all should have highlighted to you because it does have that budgetary impact. Next, let's look at cardholders. So of course, if you're borrowing materials, you're going to become an active cardholder. And I wanted to give you some context for the graph that we normally show you, which is total cardholders. So to start off, I'm going to show you the really strong, we are stable, good news. Active cardholders just keeps going up slightly. So we're engaging more patrons. The patrons that we do engage, they're staying active, they're borrowing, they're finding value in what we offer. And if you look at our top new cardhold registration branches this month, I'm happy to see NOR is returning to top of the pile. The patrons there are really excited to see it opened again and are reactivating or getting new cards. So active cardholders, very strong, but when you look at total cardholders, this is something we look at on a monthly basis. If we look at where we were in December 2024, if we look at where we are now in June, there's this drop. And I just want to point out to you, this drop is expected. I think we might have even talked about it last year at the same time. Because of the shared system schools, because of our card campaigns with students, at the end of the academic year, we have a bunch of accounts that didn't get turned into active cardholders that get deactivated. Those accounts usually return over the following school year, but it's pretty consistent every year to be about 30,000 accounts. That's exactly the drop that you're seeing here in this June data. So it's understood, it's expected, and on the whole, active cardholders is still growing. So we're not worried. We're very pleased with where we are with total cardholders. Lastly, if you are borrowing materials and have a library card, that probably means that you should see strong visit metrics, and I am happy to report that that is the case. So visits is one of those metrics that we did a big So visits is one of those metrics that we did a big, slow transition over about a year, where we transitioned from one counter to another. So when I look at long-term historical data, 2023, for example, my door count is a little bit down. And that's because we're using the old counting system that overcounted. But now we've entered into the period where, when we look at 2024, this is basically a one-to-one comparison. Starting in August, it will be an exact one-to-one comparison. We'll have gathered visit data in the exact same way. And when we look at those two, we are seeing an increase. So I am very pleased, I am projecting that we are on track with total circulation, visits, and cardholders to end at a better point than we were when we started the year, which is a very positive sign. We're always happy to have more growth. But on the whole, the takeaway is we're strong, we're stable, we're moving forward. There is one other graph, I didn't put it in my presentation today that I wanted to highlight with you. If you look at the database graph, so things, databases and learning platforms, you're going to see a big drop. Again, students' research drives a lot of engagement with that platform. So if you see that graph dropping, it's temporary, we'll see it pick back up again in the fall. So nothing to worry about there. So those are the highlights that I have for you. Any questions?
Questions?
Greg will get me if I ask a question, so.
Answer it one-on-one afterwards.
You're after the allotted time. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent, CEO report, check. Okay, any unfinished business? None, new business, none. Future agenda items, this time is made available for discussion items not on the agenda which are of interest to the library board members. Opportunity is given to suggest items to be included on future library board meeting agendas. Do any board members have something to suggest for the August 2025 board meeting?
I really appreciate it, Fiona's talking about the senior citizens and the kinds of support that we're giving to it. The seniors are increasing, and the numbers are growing. And how do we continue to build upon the excellent services that you've developed and across all of our branches? And so Greg, if that's a possibility for us to elaborate some more on that and what we're doing and the kinds of things that are supportive, that would be great.
Excellent, thank you, that's perfect. Anything else? No, all right. The next meeting, the next regular meeting will be August 25th, 2025, the College Branch Library, 4180 North College Avenue at 6:30 PM. The meeting is adjourned, we made it.
Thank you.
Thank you.